Welcome to the September 30th, 2025 School Board Work Session, followed by a closed meeting. Uh, Ms. Jones, can we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Yes.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Sherwood.
Yes.
Ms. Silverman.
Yes.
Ms. Tice.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Can we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everybody. All right, we've got a, a good work session tonight that we're looking forward to. We've got two main items that we're going to be discussing. Secondary campus traffic discussion, as well as our big student performance data presentation, which we're looking forward to. We're going to start with a secondary campus traffic discussion, and we have a special guest with us, City Manager Wyatt Shields, which we appreciate you joining on a, on a, today. But before we do that, we're going to go ahead and adopt the agenda. So I would like a motion for adoption of the agenda. Ms. Tice.
I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Any opposed? All right. Okay. Uh, Dr. Dade, uh, we put this on the agenda today. Um, we, uh, and we appreciate the, kind of, the last minute discussion on this, but there has been a number of emails, concerns about all the activity at the secondary campus specifically. So, we were wondering if, uh, and with City Manager Shields here, appreciate you joining, we could just have a brief discussion about where things are, um, and help, uh, help understand the public what's going on with the safety issues, please.
Uh, so thank you, uh, Chair Gould, uh, for this opportunity. Um, I'm very pleased to have Mr. Shields, uh, join me, uh, join us this evening, because it's really been an ongoing conversation and partnership between myself, Mr. Shields, and Chief Hard, um, regarding some of our, um, secondary, um, campus concerns. We, uh, wanted to talk through some, uh, information with regards to, to kind of our current, uh, state, and, um, a meeting that occurred yesterday morning, uh, and some next steps, uh, for the board and, uh, community. Uh, so, um, on Monday, uh, morning, uh, Mr. Shields and his team, uh, Chief Hard and his team, uh, my team, and, uh, Mr. Laub, uh, we were also joined by Ms. Alicia Prince, uh, our new COO, so I'd have to throw that in there. We are super excited, uh, to have her, uh, join our team, uh, to really observe what I've deemed as the two, uh, most pressing concerns with regards to transportation, student walking safety, uh, things of that nature. Um, and that's the intersection of Shreve, Haycock, and Route 7. Uh, I've identified that as a pain point. Um, and then, uh, really Mustang Alley, uh, where it meets Route 7, the entrance to our, um, Meridian and Henderson, um, campus. Um, but also, we'll talk a little bit about where Mustang Alley, uh, intersects with, uh, Haycock. Um, so, did have, um, a quick visual, uh, put together, because some of the next steps, I just wanted to be able to point to where some of the, uh, shorter term, uh, relief might be, um, might be, uh, provided, and I'm going to really lean on Mr. Shields to kind of fill in the detail, um, pieces. Uh, so following, uh, we started really at the, uh, intersection of Haycock and, uh, Route 7 and Shreve. There's an existing light here, and this most significant concern is students walking and biking across a very busy, uh, four-lane, uh, highway. Um, so, that's, this area is where we're really talking about, uh, concern number one. And then Mustang Alley, right here, turning, uh, into their, off of, uh, 7. Uh, so, uh, one of the short-term pieces that we discussed, uh, to alleviate some of the concerns at Mustang Alley, the greatest concern is, there's a bit of a hill as you, um, cross, uh, Shreve, Haycock, that intersection, and then head towards the secondary campus. You're pretty much coming over a hill, which, uh, reduces the line of sight for both drivers, uh, coming down Route 7, and then, uh, more importantly, our folks who are turning right and, uh, left, both in and out of, uh, Mustang Alley. Uh, and, um, 25 miles per hour seems to be a suggestion, um, for a lot of drivers, uh, in this, uh, area. One of the, uh, probably more heartening, um, next steps was, there's a light that is going to come online, uh, right here. So again, here's the busy intersection, you're coming up the hill, coming down, and picking up speed going towards 7. There's a light right here at West Falls Boulevard that we anticipate coming online in the next, uh, couple of weeks. That light comes online, I, I believe that it would, uh, alleviate a lot of the concerns that we have, because it would be a full stop. So as you think of, even if we were to put something into place with a person, it would accomplish the same thing of a full stop for traffic, allowing our buses, kiss and ride, uh, parents and, and things to, uh, turn right out of Mustang Alley. So, if that comes online, as we discussed in our meeting, uh, yesterday morning, um, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, I'll leave that to Mr. Shields to, um, kind of talk through that. Um, that would be one very positive next steps. Um, there's also, uh, a flashing yellow light that, uh, needs to go back up, uh, to identify this as a school, uh, zone, so that light, uh, Dr. Wright.
Was here or here?
The, the second one.
Second. So, uh, flashing, uh, yellow light, uh, came down, that that would be, go back up, uh, to identify it as a school zone, um, for, uh, for our campus. Um, so, uh, along with some striping, we believe some signage, uh, maybe do, um, for that area. Mr. Shields, do you want to talk a little bit more about just that Haycock, um, I'm sorry, the Route 7, Mustang Alley, uh, parts that I may have missed? I know we talked U-turn and some other pieces.
Sure. Um, and maybe just, you know, by, uh, before launching into some of the specifics, um, you know, we are deeply committed to having a safe route to school for our students, uh, on any mode of traffic, whether they're in the school bus, whether they're being transported, uh, by their parents, or whether they're walking or biking. And, um, and so we, you know, throughout the construction period, it is, it was just a very high level of attention and concern with all of the activity that's been happening at this site. We're getting to, close to the end of that, um, and the new signals going in, I think, are going to implement the Traffic Impact Analysis recommendations that were studied so extensively, you know, before any of this, uh, development was approved. Uh, we had outside experts sort of work with us, with the school staff, with VDOT, and with the Fairfax County Department of Transportation, for all of the transportation improvements that are now just on the verge of about to go into effect with the new signals, uh, the lane markings, et cetera. Specific to where Mustang Alley comes out to Route 7, um, that is a bottleneck. It has been for a very long time, uh, but it is, it's acute right now. We have the turn lane coming in, which is a new feature. That's good, that we have that. But what, uh, we're aware of is that because of the flow of, of vehicles.
Thank you. Ah, this sounds like it might be working. Um, that that lane is, is, uh, filled up. There's, you know, cars just parked in that lane, waiting to get into the campus. Um, so to alleviate that, uh, we want to have, uh, no left turn into Mustang Alley during those busy times, much clearer signage, no left turn out. When someone waits to take an illegal left turn out, that blocks things up. Um, the signal, as, uh, Doc, uh, as Terry Dade mentioned, Superintendent Dade mentioned, that will create some, uh, gaps in the traffic, which I think will help with the flow out from Mustang Alley. And, so those improvements, I think, will help address some of the concerns about the traffic turning right out of Mustang Alley. Uh, we'll watch it closely, and we'll work together, uh, with school staff on other solutions. Um, and, and some of those, I don't know if we'll bring up tonight, but there's some other things that might increase the flow of traffic through the campus to avoid that bottleneck. Um, when that signal at Chestnut goes live, we think, you know, the original idea was to have more school traffic go through the, the project, and access the drop-off loop. Um, that could alleviate some of the pressure at Mustang Alley and Route 7 as well, uh, when that signal is, is fully functioning. For, uh, students that are walking or biking to the campus, Haycock Road has been a concern for a very long period of time. One of the goals was to, uh, create signalized intersections, so we'll have two additional ones where we used to have none, um, which will give students some additional options on, on how to safely cross Haycock. We will keep the crossing guards at Mustang Alley. They're currently there from, uh, you know, the rush hour into the campus. Um, and, uh, and then after they leave that, they go to the Oak Street School. And, um, we're, uh, understaffed with our crossing guards. We have two out of, uh, the three positions, um, and we're hopeful in the coming months that we'll have the three there, and that will, will help with our coverage for this whole corridor. Um, those are a, a couple of thoughts that, that I can share tonight, um, and I appreciate the, the, the work that we're doing together. I think it's really important that, uh, we do actual real things together in coordination with each other, but also help each other with, uh, messaging, um, to parents as well, and, and, and we'll do that together.
Yep. Um, a few other, uh, thank you, Mr. Shields, um, a few other, uh, pieces that, one thing that we put in to effect right away, uh, thanks to, uh, great work from, uh, Mr. Laub, Mr. Carey, and, and Dr. Wright, is, uh, to address some of the concerns I've heard from my first day here with students, uh, bike riders crossing that busy intersection. Uh, we actually moved, um, one of our staff, um, a school security specialist, to, uh, help students and bike riders navigate, uh, Route 7. So if you think of what you see, I see it every day, when, um, I'm walking to Whole Foods or around the block, our preschoolers, you know, they have the yellow vest on with the stop sign, kind of think that for, uh, secondary and high school students, again, just an added layer of, uh, additional eyes and, and attention to that very busy intersection. So that was put into effect, uh, today. We're monitoring numbers, just to see, like, what is the volume, uh, at this, uh, intersection, but, um, that's more short-term. Uh, you'll see some of the construction longer term that's going to happen, uh, in that area that, uh, is what I fell in love with of, I keep calling it the Falls Church allure, is moving the crosswalk further down away from the very busy intersection with the, um, lined, uh, crosswalk, the, the beauty that you see all over Falls Church of, like, the brick, um, really identifiable, and moving it away from, uh, traffic. So, current crosswalk here, it's going to move down a bit away from the heavy, uh, traffic. Um, there's a no-turn, uh, signal, uh, there, so I think that that's going to help, uh, with the safety at that intersection as well. Um, the last identified, um, next step that we discussed, uh, yesterday morning was, uh, Chief Hard reaching out to our colleagues in Fairfax County. Um, as you know, um, it's a unique situation where Fairfax County is really the jurisdiction, uh, that we're talking about, all the way from that intersection, all the way down to Route 7 in front of Mustang Alley. So seeing if they have staffing, uh, that we may be able to, um, take advantage of, to, uh, provide another officer or, uh, a crossing guard, um, to help direct traffic down by, um, Mustang Alley, or anywhere else that we identify, once things start to come online, really take a look at what's actually happening to see where, if there's any other pain points that we would want to help alleviate.
Thank you, Dr. Dade. Thank you, Mr. Shields, for, obviously, for attending on, on last-minute notice, but also providing an update. I'm sure we're going to have some questions from the board. I just got a couple, two admin questions. So from the chart, um, the two, that we've got four stoplights, the, the ones that are circled in yellow are going to be coming online in the next two weeks. Is that why they're colored in yellow?
That's right. Um, well, I didn't make the graphic. They will be coming online very shortly. They should have already been online. There's, the, the number of people that have got coordinated for these things is, is kind of crazy, but, um, we are pressing to get those activated.
Okay. Okay, so that could be sooner than two weeks, okay?
Potentially, yeah.
And then, uh, Dr. Dade, you mentioned that Fairfax has jurisdiction from Haycock Road and Leesburg intersection on to the, to the west, so that's, so if we are going to get any kind of coverage or official crossing guard, we have to go through Fairfax County? Is that, or we're not allowed to provide staff, or how does that work?
So there's, um...
And I'm specifically, like, the Mustang Alley, like, people coming and out, like you said, the left. I know we can have plenty of signs, but I imagine that people, um, choose not to read, and just want to get in and out, and so I, you know, and I've seen that multiple times as well. So I was just curious, what's the thought on the Mustang Alley, Lees, Route 7, if Fairfax owns that part?
Yeah, I think it's, um, kind of a good question, and I think it's just more the collaboration between the city and the county, um, because there's things that we could do on our campus and slightly extended. Um, so even when we were having our meeting, Chief Hard was, uh, providing some tutorials to folks to make sure that they're not turning left, uh, while we're, it's like, you're doing this right in front of the chief. Um, so, um, but even just the presence of an officer in very busy sections like that with lights on, I, we've all seen what that does to reminders and, and things of that nature, so there's some things that we would be able to do on campus, uh, that, that we would explore, and then off-campus, if there's any kind of direction that you see at, like, Flint Hill, St. James, other places where, you know, there's actually a body controlling traffic, we may have to have a closer partnership with Fairfax County.
Fairfax County, is it? Okay. And then the last question, I'm pretty sure this is for Mr. Shields, and I'll open up to my colleagues. Um, the, the question has come about school zone. Um, I, I think it's, it's pretty understandable that there's a, a large school zone in front of the St. James, um, that, from my knowledge, doesn't have an entrance out to Broad Street, but they have a, I think it's a two-mile, uh, school zone, it seems. That was sarcastic, it might not be two miles. Um, but I'm curious about what, what is the reasoning for not having a school zone for the exit, like, in, in front of Leesburg Pike? What's the...
So the, um, not a satisfactory answer, but it's Fairfax County. So, we would need to coordinate with the county on having traffic enforcement. If you're talking about speed enforcement cameras?
Yeah, like, you know, like the school zone that blinks, and, you know, the lights...
Oh, so the school zone, that will happen. That's, that sign will be installed as, as quickly as we can, uh, make that happen.
Okay.
But only, sorry, can I jump in?
Sure.
Just a clarifying question. Um, but only from basically what looks like, I can't read, B1 over? So not that whole strip going up the, from Haycock?
So there's a whole set of, uh, regulations about where you can put school signs, and we have to follow those regulations. I'm not conversing exactly where they're going to go. My understanding is that we will have a school flashing sign on Haycock, and we'll have one on Route 7. I'll get back, uh, with, with the school staff to confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
And, and, uh, the one on Haycock is because the, you know, we consider the school zone going all the way down Mustang Alley. The school board owns that land, we view that as the property of the school, and really the school, uh, functions all the way out to Haycock.
Okay. Thank you, Shields. Ms. Silverman?
Thank you, Mr. Shields and Dr. Dade, for this presentation. Um, just a couple of questions. You had mentioned Chestnut. Is that the one with the yellow light where it's blocking the name? Uh, what's Chestnut?
That's Chestnut.
Oh, that's Chestnut, down there. I'm no traffic expert, but, question for you. Why is the light there and not at Mustang Alley exiting from Mary Ellen Henderson?
So, uh, there's a entrance to a interstate, and so there, um, VDOT regulations about how close you can have a traffic signal relative to a interstate ramp. So, uh, it was not possible to have a signal at Mustang Alley.
So, you know, I mean, I drive this, you know, pretty frequently. Um, I'm just trying to gauge, like, is having one at Chestnut sufficient to alleviate the problem at Mustang? Like, how, is there so much space in between the two, to where people are still speeding up to a significant amount? Like, I just can't picture it well enough. What are your thoughts on that?
We'll, we'll monitor it to, um, see if it has the effect that we think it will have. But what we anticipate is it will stop traffic, and therefore create a gap, and that will allow people to take the right turn out of Mustang Alley more easily than it's currently the case.
Yes, now that makes sense, right. So if they're, if they've got the red light, then, uh, parents, whoever can exit safely, taking that right.
There should be like a big, sort of, flow out when that happens.
And I, I, I look at it as like a double light. That's what frustrates me when I'm driving through, uh, the city of just light after light.
Like near State Theater, and you're like, whiz, or another light?
Okay, now I got another one. So, I mean, it's really two lights that's going to kind of bifurcate some of the steady stream of, of traffic.
Secondly, are we working with Fairfax and getting cameras, since, eh, we are within the school range?
Right. So, um, maybe we'll follow up on that. I, I don't have anything to say about that tonight, other than to say that we are in dialogue with the county, uh, but the county's ordinance on traffic, uh, photo enforcement for, for traffic is unique in the whole Commonwealth of Virginia, and so it's a little tricky for us to have an MOU with them. We're, it, it'll be complicated, is, is the only thing I can say right now, but we are in dialogue with them.
Okay. I just know that, eh, within, you know, I've, you know this better than I do, but just if you're within x amount of feet or whatever it is to a school, that's, then you're allowed to, but I don't know whether, what other hoops you need to jump through in order to get it done. I'm sure there's more.
There are plenty. Um, but one hoop is to, uh, because the road is in Fairfax County, we kind of have to go through Fairfax County to have tra, uh, photo enforcement there.
Okay. Um, sure, I think I have, like, just one more question. Thank you. Um, so you, and then you were saying that you're going to, that, that there's going to hopefully be a natural flow exit at Chestnut?
No, at Mustang Alley.
Or at Mustang, so, um, even for the MEH community? Do you think that would be diverted to, to Mustang Alley?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following your question.
So, so if you, if I'm, if I'm driving to Mary Ellen Henderson, and I need to exit...
And you need to take a right turn out of Mustang Alley, is, is that what...
Something that we were talking about, that, uh, Ms. Prince is going to explore with our school team, is, Mr. Shields was talking about with this turn here.
Yeah.
Our parents are stacking this lane, and if it keeps stacking, it turn, it, it'll go out to 7, which causes problems. We've also gotten emails, received emails, that if I'm part, if I'm sitting here, trying to make a right-hand turn, and these vehicles are stacked, my line of sight is even further reduced.
That's right.
So if this light comes on, Mr. Shields was talking about, there were some intent here to say, what if our families turned through here, and this became our kiss-and-ride loop, kind of through the complex?
As an entrance, not as an exit?
Right. Exit is going to have to be right-hand turned out of...
Yeah. No, but I wasn't thinking of it as, as the entrance, but now that makes more sense. Okay.
So, I mean, even...
So then, why would you do this whole round, you know, drive all the way around in order to exit?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
And there's, excuse me, there's a, an existing, it's a smaller loop, but, um, if you can kind of see where Street A is, just to the left of that, that's an actual little loop where they could enter on, um, through the development, go through there, uh, drop their students off at that loop, and then turn around and exit. So there is a possible way to avoid Mustang Alley completely. Uh, we have some families utilizing it currently, but it's definitely not the majority.
Okay. And then finally, there's still more construction happening, am I right? There, there's the headquarters for some construction? What is it?
Well, the, the, yeah. So the main thing that's happening, uh, is the, that D1 building is being built right now.
Okay.
And then, on the top side of the screen, she can't see, uh, the Hit Headquarters is being built.
Hit Headquarters, that's right.
That's right. So there is still along Mustang Alley, a lot of activity, and, um, it is protected. There's a big barrier, an plywood, um, barrier, um, but it feels busy, you know, when you're...
And it's going to feel busy once there's all the employees working there.
Well, I think construction is sort of a different kind of busy in terms of how it makes, I think, pedestrians feel as they're next to it. And, um, and I think that is something that we try to keep a very close eye on, and make sure that that construction activity is not interfering with students going to and from school, but it, eh, there is a lot of activity happening right now. I believe that contributes to the general stress that people are feeling as they're going to and from school.
Okay. Thank you for all this, I really appreciate your work on this, and I know that you said you, you already thought the lights would be there by now, so I'm sure that you don't have a great timeline, since you thought they would be there already.
That's right.
So, hopefully soon.
We're keeping the pressure on, for sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for that.
Ms. Sherwood?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you being here, and, and I appreciate the, the presentation. Um, I wanted to ask a few questions about, um, the intersection with Mustang Alley and Haycock Road, the other blue, um, uh, light, and I realize that this is closer to the construction that is going on with the Hit, um, Headquarters. But I'm wondering, I know the sightlines there as well make it hard for turning. I know there's no longer a right on red, there had been a right on red there, um, and that, there's a lot of pedestrian and cyclist traffic there. Have there been any other discussions about ways to alleviate some of the, um, and there tends to be a lot of backup on Mustang Alley when there is any sort of, like, event in the evening, or at the end of a school day, um, after pickup? So is there any, uh, further efforts in, at that intersection?
Um, I don't have anything to report on, on that. It's not, the construction is not complete because of kind of the, that, that whole area is not finished, I will say that, but there aren't any real significant, uh, design changes that people will see as we go forward.
Okay. Um, in terms of, um, I guess, some of the traffic flow during the day, I think one of the, um, concerns I've heard as well is that it's hard to really anticipate as a, a parent or a student coming to school, particularly driving, um, where changes might be happening. So for instance, today on Mustang Alley, there is a sign that said, like, no traffic this way unless it's a school bus, and I, I don't know, I presume that construction folks put that sign up and not, not the school folks. Um, but I, I'm curious about if there is a way for there to be better information for, for families to know what's coming, or if that's, or perhaps that was, the school folks who put that up, but that sort of surprised me.
Yeah, that was, that wasn't our folks. I, I mean, I was on the email that, um, we were a bit surprised as well, so we really tried to communicate out. There's been other instances where we, um, were pretty well-informed and could send things out, like, hey, please know that this is going to be closed, send it out to parents and things of that nature, so we really do, uh, try to, so we can have further conversations on, a, a little bit more, uh, le, uh, heads-up on those pieces. Uh, the other concern that, uh, Ms. Sherwood's bringing up is, um, we kind, we kind of condition our kids to, um, adapt to which ways, uh, are's going to be the easiest to school, and then when things go offline and online, they kind of create their own, uh, modifications. So we're also trying to figure out, um, as we, as things come back online, is there better signage that we can put into place, like we have for Oak Street? Like, here, here's where you should be walking safely, here's where you should be biking safely. I think we need to really strongly consider that for this area, especially thinking through the next few phases. So something as simple as this light coming on to alleviate everyone being here, this is a very safe, walkable, you have to climb a few steps, but let's get our, uh, steps in. I'd rather them do this than to create everyone going down here, but we have to communicate that to our students and, and parents, to say, you know, next week, this light is going to, um, uh, be online. This is a great option for our walkers coming up Haycock to cross on over, it's a better direct, uh, route to your high school or, or middle school. So, we've definitely been thinking through that, of how to communicate, uh, better, especially as the changes occur, and then thinking, um, shorter term, what are the safe, walkable routes? Because our kids are adjusting, um, every other week to, uh, cones and, uh, things of that nature, so definitely appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, and, and looking into that further. Appreciate it.
Catherine?
Uh, yes, thank you. So much good information tonight, and, um, hopefully the community will be able to, um, get a lot of their questions answered. Uh, I have, a follow-up to, to Ms. Sherwood's question on, um, the, if you're going south on Haycock Road, and you're turning into Mustang Alley, there, like, regularly are, like, different versions of, like... of like cones and barrels and construction debris, and I'm wondering, and, and construction workers, when they're leaving, walking in the street instead, they take the shortcut instead of crossing Hickok and going on the sidewalk, they're literally walking like up through the street. And I'm sure that they, that, I'm sure that's not what they're expected to be doing, but it's definitely happening, which, so I'm wondering if there's a way we can communicate that to the, to the contractors, if that's clear.
I, I will take that and follow up on it.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be really helpful. And then you mentioned not being able to turn left from Route 7 into Mustang Alley, right? And which, fine, great, so what would be the suggested path for those coming, if you're coming from the west, to get into the secondary campus?
I believe we would suggest that they go down to Hickok and turn left on Hickok and enter the campus through Mustang Alley.
Got it, okay, that's helpful. And then I'm wondering, it makes perfect sense to me, I think. I think the idea of using, well, it's labeled Commons Drive there, up through the mini drop-off loop outside Meridian makes sense, but I'm wondering if, I don't know if, how the recording is working, if you could actually highlight that on the map here to give people a visual? It was hard for even us to see it here to find it on the map.
And I don't want to point too specifically because Ms. Prince still has some work to do.
If we're giving too much of ourselves, that's fine.
But, but really the thought is that all of this was offline last year. So with this light coming in, is there a way for us to recreate our kiss-and-ride loop versus everyone coming in and out of the same just does not, not the most efficient way? Is there a path that we can create that comes through this area and potentially turns left here or goes all the way down, just to create a flow of in one direction, out another, versus everyone going in and out? Again, line of sight is gonna continue to be an issue, even with this stoplight, there's still gonna be a heavy volume with both of our campuses starting at the, and ending at the same time. So the thought is there's something that we may be able to creatively do through here and create a true loop all the way around, if you think of coming off of Hickok in and out.
Oh, that, that makes sense. I wasn't sure if you were, you were suggesting the little loop next to the Community Grove?
Yeah, that's one that.
Or if that was too little for, for what, this kind of flow of traffic?
Yeah.
So you're thinking of like a bigger path?
I would think so, just to be able to queue and.
Yep, yep. And I guess my other question is, well, I'm not sure who it's for, actually, I'll let you guys answer it. In terms of our advocacy with Fairfax, I, I understand that dealing with such a bigger jurisdiction and the bureaucracy or the, the red tape is going to be even more challenging since the work on, on Route 7 has to be in partnership with Fairfax. So is there, are we clear on what we as the school board, is it clear, I should say, what we can be doing as a school board, or is there, are there things that we could be doing with the advocacy, with the communication with Fairfax to help kind of get through that process that is challenging?
So how about if we work together and have sort of a unified plan, and then we could report back to the school board and to the city council on, on what that ask of Fairfax County would be? We, we've been working at the staff level and sort of exploring what those things would entail, and we'll do a little more work on that and then bring the elected bodies in.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for City Manager Shields? Anyone else? No? Oh, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for paying attention to this issue. This is a really important issue. I know you live near this intersection relatively in the city, so do I, and a lot of kids from this neighborhood walk, particularly in the mornings. And I am, I've got like a laundry list, I'm just gonna go one at a time and, you know, kind of go through them. I know there are different needs and volumes of how folks get to school and get in and out of school at different times of day, and so I'm really glad you're here, Ms. Prince, so you can, can like actually make sense of all of that. Because I do think, given the way the streets are built and the overlap with Fairfax County, we might have to have different solutions at different times of day. But in the morning, particularly for walkers, when you were talking with Fairfax County, from where you cross the bike path, you know, a bit south of there, onto Shreve Road and up, it's really dangerous. I think we all know a woman was killed walking down that path, coming home from the pool with her teenager a couple of years ago. And our kids walk that route every day, that is the fastest route to school. And so when talking to Fairfax County, I want to make sure that that subsection doesn't get left out, particularly if the morning is the rough time for that one. So I just wanted to flag that and ask you to please keep that in the conversations.
And if I could, I know you've got a list, but to respond on that, the city obtained a grant for a multi-use trail that will go along Shreve Road, and because it is mostly in Fairfax County, we've agreed with the county that they will actually do the design and construction. And that's underway right, the design is underway right now. Now, so that will provide a really nice, wide, off-the-street path all the way to this intersection. And as Dr. Dade was talking about earlier, then we, you know, we made improvements to that intersection. It is a very busy intersection, and so we still have concerns about how that intersection functions for younger students in particular. But that leg down to the WNOD is going to be bad news, a construction site, good news at the end of it, a very wide and safe multi-use path for bikers and walkers.
I'm delighted to hear that's coming online, I think that's fantastic. In the meantime, we need to find a solution. I've been sent pictures by, from parents who are walking that way of construction vehicles from Founders 2 blocking the sidewalk.
There was a telephone wire that was hanging down low.
Telephone wires hanging down the sidewalk is damaged, like it's just not safe. One family shared with me that a car zooming up Shreve going north was trying to get around a construction vehicle and came on the sidewalk near them while they were walking with their children. So I just want to make sure that when you're talking to Fairfax County, I love the long-term solution, we need a shorter term, one also for that. So thank you. That intersection, I agree, is, is challenging, that Route 7 and Hickok for all sorts of reasons. I, I have both walked that way in morning rush hour, and I've driven my kids to school in morning rush hour, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who not Falls Church City people going through that intersection too, right? So there's not the awareness, right? You think folks in Falls Church City know the kids are going to school. Folks in Fairfax County or folks cutting through are not necessarily that aware. And I have, I feel like I see kids darting cars and cars darting kids, you know, around, and I just wanna, I'm glad we have someone at that intersection now kind of watching. The barrels seem to move on a quite regular basis, and where the construction vehicles are seem to move on a quite regular basis, and the streets aren't lined. And so I guess the question is, do we know when the, even like the striping is coming in?
Tonight, yeah.
All four corners?
Yeah, I mean, that work is underway right now.
Awesome. Glad to hear that, I think that will help at least a little bit, because it is very unclear right now where to go. The Mustang Alley and Hickok light that some of my colleagues spoke about, in my experience of the last week, it is only working intermittently, it misses cycles. So like you're trying to find a Mustang Alley, and Hickok turns green, it turns red, it turns green, it turns red, and you're still sitting there. So I don't, you know, if you could check on that and just make sure, I don't know what's happening. Also, where the stop line is for cars coming out of Mustang Alley, you can't see the road at all, especially with the hit construction on the left. So it's just, that's at all times of day, I notice it in the middle of the night, like lean on the night, in the evening. So I think we just want to make sure, flag that for you on your checklist, you can make sure that's working consistently. I'm excited by all of the different kind of permutations of thinking about how folks are gonna get in and out of school, and that's great. I am concerned about where walkers and drivers are gonna be crossing. If we're putting walkers through street, I don't know what that's called, with the steps, and we're putting drivers through the central area, we're gonna have walkers and drivers crossing. And so I just want to flag that as you're looking at that for both kind of the near and long term. I have used that little intersection drop-off circle thing, it's small and tight, and it's fine. But again, even within the Founders Road construction on Common Drive, there are work vehicles moving in and out at rush hour, they're blocking the road half the time. I know that's not permanent, but in the near term, if we got kids walking through and construction vehicles, I don't know if there's something that can be done that can basically like pause the construction vehicles for 20 minutes or something. But I mean, I have been stopped by construction vehicles that are like, "Wait, you know, we're gonna back up or pull in," or "We're gonna block the road for the next three minutes" or whatever, right at like 8:15, 8:25 in the morning. And I'm a grown-up driver, right? We have a lot of, a lot of teenage drivers, so I just wanted to flag that, I've experienced that multiple times. That barricade, I don't, I didn't see, I didn't drive to the school this morning, I was out of town, but there has been a barricade occasionally at Mustang Alley that doesn't let cars in, which is not a bad thing, either at Line A, oh, I can't, I can't read from here, Lane A and the common, forcing cars coming from Mustang Alley to turn into the little traffic circle. I've also seen cars go around it, I've seen it knocked down. And so I just, however we solution that without a, I'm worried without a person there, people aren't gonna follow the rules. So I'm just flagging that also. I'm also concerned about if we're asking people to go turn left at Hickok Road and left into Mustang Alley, how do they get to the school parking lot if they're coming from the other direction? Right? So they're just, from an operational standpoint, these are all things that I have observed, driving my own children to school, walking to school at that kind of rush hour in the morning. And I just want to make, I'm listing them all because I want to make sure they don't get lost as we're figuring out the solutions. Because at the end of the day, safety is paramount, and if we're having walkers and cars keeping bumping into each other, which I'm glad to hear all the signaling that's coming in, I'm not clear how that's gonna help the walkers get in. So I just want to, to flag that. I think that's my, my list, my punch list of things that I wanted to share, but I appreciate y'all paying attention to this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Mr. Anderson?
Thanks for your attention to this. I know this has been something that we've heard quite a bit about, something that we've heard about for a bit of time, especially probably since the start of school. And I know that, I'm, I am just curious as to how much ability y'all have to adjust the walklights that are gonna be at these intersections? Because I know that not everywhere in the city are the walklights the best timed, nor they, nor do they have the largest head start in front of the cars that are going in the same direction. And so having dedicated walklights with a significant amount of time where no cars are actually moving could probably help alleviate some of Ms. Henderson's concerns about the conflicts that might occur in the, in those times. So that would just be something that I would take a look at. And, and I know that tonight is mostly focused on the secondary, but I also don't want to let the other school where there's significant walkers, Oak Street Elementary, get lost in the, get lost in the shuffle. I know that the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation sent the city council and the city some suggestions around improving the road design to make it safer for the little ones who, who walk and bike to school. And so I just want to make sure that as we take a look at the secondary, Oak Street also gets much needed attention.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yes, and obviously the topic tonight is secondary, but we can obviously have another session. I don't know if Mr. Shields will ever come back, but if he does, we can definitely ask about some of the areas. Any other quick comments? We have Ms. Headings here who is ready to go, but we want to, for our main, our main show, but any other questions or comments for Mr. Shields, who we appreciate you coming, or Dr. Dade, or Ms. Prince, given her first school board meeting?
So yes.
Ms. Tice?
I actually do, I just was wondering, I, I have a feeling that there will be a lot of community members dialing in and watching this, and I wonder if it's worth spelling out more clearly where and how concerns are best shared, so that they know who to direct what sorts of concerns or questions to.
So I'll give a crack. I would say anything that's on the roadway, that should come to city staff. And we can start with, send it to citymanager@fallschurchva.gov. For internal flow, I would think that would go to school staff. Does that, does that, are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
All right, well, I appreciate it. All right, so we will, again, appreciate Mr. Shields, you coming on last-minute notice to talk about this, and obviously Dr. Dade and your team to put together visual, we'll keep this updated, and we'll possibly revisit this as it goes, but really appreciate everybody's attention on this. Obviously, getting our kids to and from school, however they get there, is paramount and of utmost importance, and I know we all share that same mission and, and passion. So thank you, Mr. Shields. All right.
Thank you.
All right, all right. So that concludes our introductory topic of secondary campus traffic discussion. We are now moving on to 2.02 Student Performance Data Presentation. Ms. Headings is still here, so we appreciate it. We are going to turn this directly over to Ms. Headings, or is that right?
Yeah.
Dr. Bates? Oh, you want, okay, Dr. Bates, sorry. Go ahead.
So thank you, Dr. Chair Gould and Vice Chair Tice, members of the board. You know, this is our, an exciting time of year for us because we have the opportunity to share our student data update with the school board and the community, and there's a lot to celebrate. And so this evening, Ms. Headings is going to lead us through that. But just a couple of things, I want to send a, also send a thank you to Vice Chair Tice and Dr. Anderson for meeting with us during the final kind of planning stages of the presentation and sharing some feedback and guidance on what you all thought the board might be interested in seeing as well as the public as well. As you're gonna see this evening, we took a bit of a shift. We're not go, we're gonna look at our data story and FCCPS through the quantitative lens. So we don't have much qualitative data in the presentation, that's something that we started a few years ago. And although there's a lot to celebrate, we really wanted to focus on, focus in on our assessment data. But we do look for opportunities to share that qualitative story as well in, in the future, and show how our students have demonstrated success outside of the classroom through the fine and performing arts, through clubs and activities, sports, as well as co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And so we can be in touch with you all about how to best share, share that data with you. Kind of a last point here, there's two or three pause points within the presentation where we'll take an opportunity to pause and answer any questions that you, you all may have. If there's a question that we're not prepared to answer in the moment, Ms. Headings has been working in close collaboration with our principals and our curriculum and instruction director, our CIA, our curriculum instruction and achievement directors, as well as other school staff and our chiefs here to get the data necessary for this presentation, and we'll get those answers to you within a couple of days. But hopefully, we're able to answer any questions that you may have. And with that, I'll go ahead and look at the agenda here. And so we've already done the introductions, I'm Dr. William Bates, Chief Academic Officer, and again, I want to thank Ms. Headings for all of her, her hard work in pulling this together. We'll take a brief overview and look at our core values. We'll talk about our student growth and academic performance, again, that's gonna be a quantitative approach to that, Ms. Headings will lead that. Talk about college readiness through that IB lens and how we prepare students as IB students for success in that area, and then any changes that we anticipate seeing on the horizon. And so before I turn it over to Ms. Headings, I want to kind of ground us in our core values and FCCPS, with our mission being a premier IB school division. As we've shared before, we are a full IB continuum with, starting with our youngest learners at JTP up through those students who walk across the stage as graduates in, in May, whether they are walking as an IB DP diploma candidate or a graduate. All of our students are IB students. And our vision, again, really focused in on being student-centered and supporting all of the unique needs of our students and equipping our instructional staff, our leaders, to be able to support students so they can be successful inside of the classroom as well as outside of the classroom. well as outside of the classroom. And then I'll end with this message here that we have at the bottom, which is every student will engage in learning that enables achievement at their highest levels in order to obtain, to attain post-secondary goals and lifelong success. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Headings, our Director of Assessment and Accountability.
Thank you, Dr. Bates. Thank you, Chair Gould, Vice Chair Tice, and members of the board. I'm excited to be here with you tonight to share some of our quantitative data that highlights accomplishments and achievement here in Falls Church City. So as Dr. Bates mentioned, our student growth and academic performance is going to be focused on quantitative data primarily related to the Virginia Assessment Program. So we're going to look at our annual pass rates, which include SOL tests and VAP tests, the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program for our students with disabilities. We will look at VALS data, which is the Virginia Language and Literacy Scanner System. That is a replacement for PALs, if you're wondering where that one came from. And then our WITA test for our English learners and chronic absenteeism. Whoops, went too far. So as we jump into the Virginia Assessment Program, I'll just take a minute to remind you which assessments are included in the data that we're looking at this evening. It is all tests that were administered between summer of 2024 and spring of 2025. Tests that were administered in summer of 2025 will show up in next year's data. So this includes SOL tests and those VAP assessments. And all students who were tested in Falls Church City schools are included in this data regardless of entry date. So that means if a student transferred to us in April and took an SOL in May, their result is included in here, even if they received their instruction in another division. Regardless of English language proficiency, they are included with the one exception listed down below, which we'll dive into, and then the school where the instruction was provided. So for those transfer students, their results are still included. With regard to our multilingual learners, or as VDOE still refers to them, English learners, the reading results for English learners who have fewer than three semesters of school in US public schools, those can be removed from calculations in some cases. So we'll dive into that once we get to that piece of the data. And the reporting groups that you'll see show up throughout our SOL conversation, these are the standard eight reporting groups, plus the all students reporting group that VDOE includes, and we'll be looking at pass rates for report, or, I'm sorry, we'll be looking at pass rates for reporting groups with more than 10 students, because if it's fewer than 10 students, then that data is suppressed to protect student privacy. I'll let, yep, I'll let Dr. Bates speak to this one, and then we'll jump back into data.
Okay. Yeah, so we just wanted to take a moment before we went any further to think back to last year and revisit our focus for those goals last year. We developed a rigorous thorough auditing process following each VDOE testing window. As you're aware, our, there are multiple testing windows during the course of the year, starting as early as within a few weeks of students returning up through early to mid-May. We updated prior submissions to the VDOE to more accurately represent FCCPS student achievements. We obtained assessment results from third-party vendors to fill in some of the data gaps over the past four years. About three, three to four years ago, we did a data audit and learned, again, it's that old adage, good data in, good data out, or good input, good output, and we learned that there were some gaps in our data. And so through that audit, we partnered with a third-party vendor to do some cleaning and scrubbing of our systems and the data within those systems. We created an assessments by grade level page on the website, which provides our families with key information about all assessments administered in FCCPS. And Ms. Headings will talk to you about our PBAs or performance-based assessments. We shared last year at this time that in US VA and US history classes, we would be implementing PBAs, and this year we will be expanding that to World History Two. And then if we move to the far right, the blue and gold hexagon or boxes or images there, we want to continue our focus on narrowing and closing our achievement gaps specific to math and ELA or reading. We shared a couple of years ago, around this time, that with the new VLA, which was the Virginia Literacy Act, we thought we were, or we were confident that we were very well positioned with the work that Dr. Ann Boleto, our ELA coordinator, has led around the science of reading. We went through a textbook adoption that was directly aligned with the science of reading, and we had been planning and preparing and training teachers in the science of reading as it relates to math. Ms. Jen Fesseden, our Coordinator of Mathematics, has been continuing her ongoing work in support with teachers or math coaches as it relates to math progression, placement, as well as changes in math standards. And so, again, very well positioned based upon the work that we've been doing over the last number of years. And then our increase of rigor for all students, as we've shared, all students are IB students. Our teachers write curriculum, they align the curriculum with the rigors of IB, and I think that is shown through the data that you're about to see as it relates to student performances.
So the first SOL data we'll look at, these are our annual pass rates by subject, and this shows our data as well as a comparison to Virginia. So you can see that FCCPS exceeded the Virginia overall average pass rates and the percent of students passing advanced in every subject. We exceeded that Virginia overall pass rate anywhere from 17 to 24% across the four subject areas. And as Dr. Bates just shared, here in Falls Church City, we're not only striving for high achievement, but we want to increase the rigor for all of our students, and that comes through in our pass advanced rates that you see. The lighter green that you see on the screen is the pass proficient, and the darker green represents pass advanced. And our pass advanced rates, which are more than double the state pass advanced rates in reading, math, and history, are truly evidence of that increase in rigor for all students here in Falls Church City. If we move on and take a look in a little more detail, there's a lot happening on this slide, so let me navigate you through it. This is a modified version of a representation you saw last year, where we have our pass rates by subject broken down by all of those key reporting groups. And you can see we have three years of data shown on here. And the green rectangles that you see everywhere showing up on here indicate where we had the highest pass rate in Virginia. So not just looking at our overall pass rate, but you can see spread throughout our reporting groups, our black students in science, jumping down towards the bottom, looking at students of multiple races, students with disabilities, and our white reporting group, we can see that we have quite a few of those green rectangles representing the highest pass rates in the state in that particular subject area. And while there aren't as many green rectangles for some of our other reporting groups, if you take a closer look at the economically disadvantaged reporting group, English learners, and our Hispanic reporting group, you'll see those blue arrows shown across the three years, and those arrows indicate subjects for reporting groups where we've seen at least a 9% increase in pass rate over the last three years. So even in the reporting groups where we're not claiming the number one ranking in the state, we are showing growth almost across the board here in Falls Church City. At this point, we'll take a slightly closer look at our pass rate in reading for English learners. This was a change that I had mentioned in last year's data presentation as a change that was on the horizon, so now we're circling back and taking a look at what that change did to the data and the pass rates for our English learners. So English learners are now defined, recently arrived English learners, are now defined as English learners who have been enrolled in US schools for less than 12 calendar months or less than three semesters, whereas previously, recently arrived ELs were students who had been enrolled in US schools for fewer than 11 semesters. So the definition of a recently arrived English learner changed dramatically, dropping from 11 semesters to three semesters. And the implications of this in our pass rates are that failing SOL reading scores for recently arrived ELs are removed from pass rate calculations to allow time for English language acquisition. We can all attest to how difficult the English language is to learn and all of the ins and outs of it. So this really does have a big difference in how data is reported for recently arrived ELs. So what this slide is showing is a comparison, we're looking at this year's data, so it's the 2025 pass rate, and in the orange, that is calculated with the three semester rule. So how this data is now calculated by Virginia. For comparison, I applied the old business rule just so that we'd be able to see, did our pass rate really drop, or was it a change in how the calculation was done? And you can see that based on the old rule, our pass rate would have been at 62% if we were still looking at the 11 semester rule. So when we go back and look at the prior year data, I think I have a pointer, nope, I guess it doesn't work. Looking at our prior year reading pass rates for English learners, in 2022, 23, we were at 65%, and then up to 74. This year, we dropped down to 54%, but that is largely due to that change in how recently arrived English learners are calculated. And so this is a change that impacts everyone across the entire Commonwealth, it's not unique to us, and that's evident in the reading pass rates across the state. A huge celebration here in Falls Church City is when we take a closer look at our annual pass rates for students with disabilities. Since 2020, since the 2022, 23 school year, pass rates for students with disabilities have increased in all subject areas. You can see reading, math, science, and social studies shown up here, so we've had increases of anywhere from 5 to 8% over the past three years. This data includes SOL and VAP tests. When we focus specifically on VAP tests, 85% of our students with disabilities who took the VAP assessments passed those assessments, and of the students who passed, 50% of them earned the advanced proficiency level on their VAP assessments. So our students with disabilities truly are doing tremendous things here in Falls Church City, and that is a testament to the great work of our special education staff and teachers, supporting those students with their individual needs. Another celebration, those of you that were at Convocation or you may remember from the slides that were shared after that, at Henderson, looking at advanced math, it is important to call attention to this one. As you are probably aware, current legislation and changes in the school accountability framework have really increased the emphasis on students taking advanced math classes in middle school. And not only do we want our middle school students who are ready just to access that math content, but we want them to be successful in it as well. And so you can see here, we had 114 students at Henderson who were enrolled in a high school level math class and took the corresponding SOL. We had 100% pass rates in both Algebra I and Geometry. The combined pass advanced rate was 60% when we actually break it down and do a weighted average. You can see the breakdown for each subject area here on the slide. And for comparison, the pass advanced rate across the state averages about 30% for Algebra I, and you can see we were at a 54% pass advanced, and the average pass rate is about 40, pass advanced rate is about 40% for Geometry, and we were at 87% pass advanced in Henderson. Oh, in Geometry at Henderson, sorry. And I do want to mention this other SOL that was added in just a couple of years ago, the Integrated Reading and Writing SOL Test, or IRW for short. This is administered to students in grades five to eight, so essentially any student in grade five or eight who would take the reading SOL is also expected to participate in the IRW. It is designed to evaluate reading and writing all in one assessment. The IRW is currently still optional for end-of-course English students, so our high school students at Meridian do not have to take the IRW as of yet. And it's important to know that for the IRW, we're required to administer it. VDOE does not score it on a scale of 0 to 600 like the other SOLs. Instead, it's reported as points earned in each possible category of the test, and there are no proficiency levels assigned to these scores. So there is no fail, pass proficient, or pass advanced with the IRW results. When we look at the IRW data, so this is showing 2024 in the light gray and 2025 in blue, and across the X-axis, the first component that we have is the multiple choice and the TEI items, which are technology enhanced items. So that could be like a drag and drop, fill in the blank in the sentence sort of thing. The middle score is the composing or composing and written expression score, and then usage and mechanics. So this is our average performance from grades five and eight, so Oak Street and Henderson combined. And you can see that we held steady in our multiple choice and TEI performance, and both of the other components of the IRW, our scores increased in both schools, and this is because Dr. Ann Boleto analyzed the results with the English teams at each school to really focus on what skills they might be able to address more explicitly, or how they might be able to shift the instructional focus based on the IRW data that we had from 2024. So with the work led by Ann, our teams did a great job of using that assessment data to inform instruction and improve student outcomes. So we can go ahead and take a break here for any SOL-specific questions. There is no SOL reading data for, or writing data for high school. We'll talk about the substitute assessment that was used for that in the next component, but any other SOL questions, we are happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Ms. Headings. Thank you, Dr. Bates. Questions so far about what we've seen, or any comments? Ms. Henderson, and then Ms. Murphy?
Thank you for sharing all this information, and I appreciate the explanation of it. This question may be for you, Dr. Bates, I'm not really sure. And that is, particularly, I appreciated your explanation of the limit that's 75 to 54% and how to understand what's going on there. I'm curious how we're using that to inform how we're supporting the students. I realize there's some external factors, the 11 months to 12 months, but what are we doing with that information?
I, I think if you hold until we get to the WITA data, I did actually do a comparison to prior years, so we can look at growth and students exiting the EL program, so that we're not just relying on that reading SOL data. So if you still have questions after that, maybe we can circle back to it? Does that work?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. This is a wonderful presentation, and I'm truly excited, particularly with respect to the increases in scores for students with disabilities. My question is actually about that data, just clarifying, these are VAP scores and SOL scores combined? Or is, how should I understand that data?
Yes. So the data that you see on this slide, this includes VAP and SOL test results together for any student with disabilities. It does not include students with a 504, but otherwise, any student with a disability who took an SOL or a VAP test is included in these calculations. And then I also shared that when we look at just VAP performance, we had an 85% pass rate overall. The reason that I didn't do a full disaggregation or show specific VAP data is because we have so few students. If we broke it down by subject area, I wouldn't be able to show it to you, because we would have, you know, one student here, three students there.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's exactly what I was asking. Well, that's, you provided the information that asks.
Okay.
What I was thinking. Thank you.
Ms. Sherwood, then Silverman.
Thank you very much for this presentation. It's very helpful, and it's great to see all of this in a really digestible way. I had a question about the IRW. I think on slide 16, it looks at grades five and eight scores reported as kind of one average, right?
Yes.
Did we see much difference between the grade levels, or was performance pretty similar at grade five and at grade eight?
Performance was similar, although at Oak Street, they did show larger increases, particularly in the composing and written expression component. So the average score at Oak Street from 24 to 25 went from a 3.9 to a 5.1 in that composing and written expression component, and usage and mechanics at Oak Street increased from 4.4 to 5.5. So overall, one point increase in both of those components at Oak Street.
That's great. Thank you. And you, and you mentioned that some of the data was taken last year to change instruction, and we're seeing some of the results of that.
Yes.
So that's great to hear. Another question about, about this particular measure, do we, is there a way for us to compare, how do our student scores compare to the rest of Virginia? I know we talk about that for the others, but do we know with IRW?
VDOE has not yet released that data publicly, like on the school quality profiles, where we can see those orange and blue bar charts and be able to look at. and be able to look at where we are compared to the state. And then the build a table tool, which allows anyone to go online and download SOL scores from any school division in the Commonwealth. None of that includes IRW because VDOE is still figuring out how they're going to use it and if it's going to be incorporated into the new school performance and support framework. So they have done very limited reporting with the IRW on a state scale.
Okay, thank you. And I did have some questions about ELs, but it sounds like it might be worth just holding those until.
Sure.
A little further down. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. I have questions about the SOL. I think this is SOL, the pass rates on page slide 11?
Yes.
I'm just curious about like some of these significant jumps. Are these all apples to apples comparisons throughout the years?
They, they are. It's using the, the only difference is that change in definition of English learner. Yep, that's the only difference. Otherwise, these are largely unadjusted pass rates. So I think what we differentiated last year, and there were kind of two sets of pass rates that we looked at before because we had the annual pass rates, which are largely unadjusted, and then the accreditation pass rates. And that accreditation system is now gone and has been replaced by the School Performance and Support Framework. Those calculations are not done exactly the same as these, but everything that you see here is apples to apples. These are annual pass rates. The, the only other adjustments to these are the typical one where if a student fails on the first attempt and then retakes it two weeks later, only that passing score counts. Likewise, if they fail and retake it and fail the second time, only one failing score counts.
But that's.
But that is standard. Yep.
So if that happened two years ago and it happened.
Exactly.
So, okay.
Yep.
So I guess I'm, you know, happy to hear, but just curious how something like within, within the African American community goes from 52% or 52 to 76 over two years, like almost a 25% increase. Like, what do we attribute that to? Like, that just is such a significant increase that I'm just curious as to how that is.
I'll let Dr. Bates speak to anything instructionally related, or we can take that back to the team. But I would remind you that for some of these reporting groups in Falls Church City, they are smaller numbers of students. So our number of Black students is much smaller than white students, for example. So a change of maybe five students in that reporting group can make a more significant difference in what you see in the pass rate.
That's a very good explanation. Thank you for that. And so I'm just curious if there's other, so economically disadvantaged also would be a smaller subgroup. So a change of two or three test scores can really change the final outcome.
Right, so like here in Falls Church City, out of our enrollment, fewer than 4% of our students are Black. So that's a very small number of students. Economically disadvantaged were usually around 10 to 11% of our enrollment. So again, relatively small denominators in those calculations.
Makes sense. But, and you're just, you assured me that it was apples to apples.
Yes.
Because I know that in previous years, we've had discussions about that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions about this? Ms. Teis?
Yes, thank you. I had the pleasure of seeing this presentation last week as well. And it was actually really helpful to hear it a second time and was able to absorb it even better. So thank you for your time, and I can't imagine how long it takes to put all this together. So, super helpful. I'm curious, I, this is more than, more than enough data for us to process tonight, but I'm curious when the appropriate people drill down by grade and look at, at any of these tests more granularly, if there's anything that comes to mind that would be sort of the headline when you're, when you're drilling down grade by, at the grade level? Or if that's a follow-up question, you might not have it off the top of your heads, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I would just offer that our, our grade level teams, they meet on a consistent basis. And in addition to planning, unpacking standards, looking at standards alignment and lesson alignment to standards, are also making data informed decisions. And so they're looking at student performance data, they're looking at growth data, they're looking at multiple measures and metrics, whether it's SOL data, whether it's formative, more kind of real time data. They're looking at all of those data points to inform their decisions and take next steps, whether it's for acceleration or for intervention of students who may be in greater need. We also have our MTSS process that teachers engage in and our instructional leaders at the school level engage in, whether it's specific to mathematics, reading, or any other curriculum area.
Right. No, that's good to know. I'm glad, and I'm sure they're, they're doing their due diligence. I'm, I guess I'm just curious, like, if we were to drill down and look at the score, the reading scores by grade level, would they all hover near that 92%? That's our overall? Or are there, can there be, are there discrepancies? Significant discrepancies between the different grades? You don't have to say which grades or the numbers, but.
Yeah, I think every year, there can be differing performance rates by grade level. We do look at the school level as like watching cohorts of students move through. So how do they perform at the third grade level to fourth grade level to fifth grade level? And then seeing where we can drill down to see if there's any things that are not aligning, like we expected our fourth graders to perform at X and they didn't. Or we expected our fourth graders to perform at this level and they far exceeded. So there's always going to be kind of that mix. And I'll work with Dr. Wright because there's, looking at some of these, this growth. There's probably some really good stories and strategies that we would want to share out with the board as, you know, here's the Henderson story in math. Here's the Oak Street and Henderson story in science and social studies. Because just looking at kind of that growth, you rarely see a lot of subgroups all performing over time with that significant growth. So I think there's something there that we would want to kind of cycle back with. But Dr. Wright works on the school plans. But anything that I think we would want to share to say, you know, here's an identified strategy from our particular school that we think really played, paid good dividends for student performance, we'd be happy to kind of bring back.
Yeah, I would, I would just be, I would just be curious. I'm sure there's certain celebrations, like some grade in some subject really extra crushed it, and some grade in some subject might have really, you know, gotten some disappointing, more disappointing scores that they weren't expecting. It was just, I just wasn't sure if there were any headlines. My only other question was, and maybe I missed this, so I apologize if this was explained, but the difference in the English learners, is, was it a difference in whether their scores were counted or whether they took the test at all? Were these students already taking the test and then their scores were just dropped? Or did they not take the test until this year?
No, they, so English learners who, recently arrived English learners are always expected to take the SOL test if they are a recently arrived English learner with, you know, according to that definition. So before, if they had 11 semesters in a public school or fewer than that, then if they failed, that score would get removed from the calculation. If they passed, it stayed in.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're, we're still testing all of our recently arrived English learners. The difference is that this year, only students with fewer than three semesters in a US public school were removed from those calculations if they failed.
Okay, so the only difference was, was if the fail was included or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions to this point? Okay, we'll keep going. Thanks, Ms. Haddens. Thanks, Ms. Bates.
So next, we will jump into some of our alternatives to SOL testing. So the, this year marked, or last year marked the first large scale administration of the Work Keys Business Writing Test. This was something that I previewed for you at last year's data presentation. And the shift to using Work Keys Business Writing instead of the EOC writing SOL for our students in grade 11 was supported by central office and school leaders and teachers because it really emphasizes practical writing skills while preserving valuable instructional time in the classroom. It's much shorter than the writing SOL for students. It's two days of testing. It's very disruptive to the schedule, and teachers hate losing their kids for, you know, three to five hours across two days in March. So the Work Keys Test was really supported by everybody. And this is a VDOE approved substitute test for the writing SOL. So students could still earn their verified credit. The difference is for most students, they did it in about 30 minutes, and it was responding to a real world scenario in writing, things that most of our students are going to have to do in the very near future. So we tested all of our students in English 11, who previously would have been scheduled for that EOC writing test, as well as any student in grade 12 who still needed a verified credit in writing. So this shows us a comparison of pass rates over the last three years. You'll see in 2022 and 23, and 23 to 24, we're looking at SOL data with our overall pass rates. And then the Work Keys Business Writing Test administered in the 24, 25 school year. And you can see that our overall pass rate increased. So our pass rate on Work Keys Business Writing was higher than what it's been on the writing SOL. And our students have always performed tremendously well on the writing SOL. So to get that overall pass rate up over 95% is a great accomplishment. And you can see the increase in percentage of students who earned a score that counts as pass advanced. So even though it is not graded on the 0 to 600 scale, VDOE still equates work key scores to those different performance levels, just like they would for SOLs. So we had a higher percentage of students. We were up to 75% of our students earned a score that was equivalent to passing advanced on that Work Keys Business Writing Test. So this really was an opportunity to provide our students a real world application of the skills that they're learning and practicing in class in a way that prioritized classroom instructional time, doing more valuable activities than taking a standardized SOL online. So we're really excited to celebrate this and looking forward to administering Work Keys again this year. Another exciting first for us last school year was the shift to using performance-based assessments in lieu of the Virginia and US History SOL. This is another state-approved option for awarding verified credit. Students complete state-developed performance tasks throughout the year, and those tasks are scored using a state-developed rubric. So the system is standardized, and this is used to award that verified credit for students who needed it in Virginia and US History last year. And these PBAs are another great example of shifting assessment methods to better allow our students to demonstrate their content mastery in more authentic ways and reducing the time and the resources spent on high-stakes testing. So looking back over our SOL data over the last two years, in 22, 23, we were at about an 84% pass rate, up to 86% in US History in 23, 24. And then last year, using the performance-based assessment, 97% of our students who attempted this because they needed a verified credit in US History earned that verified credit through the PBA. And we did have a handful of students still take the SOL either because they transferred in partway through the year and weren't here for some of those performance tasks or for some other reasons. But those students who took the SOL also had a 100% pass rate. So this is another great option for earning verified credit and was tremendously successful at Meridian. And as Dr. Bates mentioned earlier, we are now expanding the use of performance-based assessments into World History 2 for the 2025, 26 school year as well. Shifting gears now, going from talking about our high school students, now we're going to the other end of the spectrum and over to our youngest learners at Mount Daniel and the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener System, known as VOWS. As I mentioned earlier, this is the replacement for PALs. It's the early screener and identifies students who may be at risk of developing reading difficulties. This test provides code-based questions, subtests focused on language and processing to really help teachers identify the skills where students may need more support. It's aligned with the Science of Reading. It's required by the Virginia Literacy Act for all students in pre-K to grade two to take this test. And last year, it was required for students new to Virginia Public Schools in grades three to eight. This year, it is required for all students in grades four to eight as well. So it has been expanded, but for the purposes of tonight, we're just going to look at VOWS at Mount Daniel last year because that's the only place that was required for everybody. And on this slide, you'll see we have kindergarten data and first grade data. The VOWS test is administered in the fall and in the spring. Gray represents fall of 2024, spring 2025 is in blue. And what we really want to focus on here is the change from fall to spring because we're looking at growth students are making. So we're comparing gray versus blue. And our goal is to decrease the number of students who are in the high-risk category of developing reading difficulties while increasing the number of students in the low-risk category. There is no option on the VOWS test of a student being at no risk of developing a reading difficulty. So low risk is the highest rating that a student can get. So looking at kindergarten on the left, we decreased the percent of students in that high-risk category by over 50% while increasing the percent of students in the low-risk category by more than 50%. So students were moving in the right direction in kindergarten. And you see the same thing in first grade. Our percent of students in that high-risk category decreased by almost 10% from fall to spring. And the students in the low-risk category increased by almost 40% from fall to spring. The last assessment to share with you is our WEDA access data. This is the assessment that our English learners take. It's used to identify, monitor, and support them with their growth in English language acquisition. So this data includes students in grades one to 12 whose WEDA access scores increased from the prior year. That's how we're defining growth. And we also include kindergarten students. VDOE does not include kindergarten students in their WEDA growth data because those students take the WEDA screener when they start, and then they take the WEDA access test the following year when they're in first grade. But those tests are scored on the same scale. So even though VDOE doesn't include that data, we compare it because we think it's important to be able to compare growth from kindergarten to first grade. And then students exit the ESOL program when they score a 4.4 or higher on the WEDA access test. So those are the business rules used for the data that you see on the next slide. So the light blue is the percentage of English learners showing growth, and the darker blue shows our percent of English learners who are exiting services. So going back to the questions about, you know, reading pass rates for English learners and potential impacts of that change in definition, what we can see on this slide is that even though our reading SOL pass rate decreased last year from the prior years, this is evidence that our English learners are still showing growth and exiting from the ESOL program in the same ways that they were in prior years because our growth rate is approximately the same, and we have the same percentage of students exiting the program. So they are still showing growth in their English language acquisition, even though the reading SOL pass rate doesn't show that. And lastly, before our next break, just a quick look at chronic absenteeism because this is another piece of data used in accountability by the Department of Ed. And as a quick reminder, chronic absenteeism is defined as a student being absent for 10% or more of the school year regardless of the reason. So excused or unexcused absences count towards a student's chronic absenteeism status. We know that being absent can negatively impact student academic progress and their social development. So regardless of reason, we want our students to be here. We want to create welcoming spaces where our students want to come to school and they feel safe coming to school, and they're excited to come here and be with us. So looking at chronic absenteeism over the years, this goes all the way back to pre-COVID on the far left. And you can see the 24, 25 data for our division in yellow. Our chronic absenteeism rate as a division was at 8% last year. So slightly up from the 23, 24 school year, but not alarmingly so. We're still lower than the prior year where our high was at 11%. And I wanted to call out Mount Daniel in particular for doing such a great job of engaging families and creating that welcoming environment where students want to come and reaching out to families, emphasizing the importance of consistent attendance. And as a result, you can see what's happened to their chronic absenteeism rate over the years. Going back to the 22, 23 school year, they were at over 15%. Last year, it dropped down to 6.75, and somehow, they reduced their chronic absenteeism even more in the 24, 25 school year. So this is just great work by the Mount Daniel team of communicating with families and creating spaces where students want to come and be a part of school. So we'll take a pause here for questions about our other assessments. Dr. Dade?
So I wanted to go back to Ms. Henderson's question because I want to, I feel like I have to share just kind of where I stand really firm philosophically on our English. have to share just kind of where I stand really firm philosophically on our English learners. So, you know, thinking of that slide 12 and this slide. So just think of this fact. So they, the VDOE, in their infinite wisdom said that a student entering the U.S. enrolled in schools for three semesters, which constitutes 12 calendar months. So basically Little Terry moves to Portugal, moves to Brazil, summer of second grade year. He goes to a Brazilian school and takes a Brazilian SOL at the end of his third grade year. That, that's when we would have expected Little Terry to master the Portuguese language and take an assessment just like any other kid. So I'm just philosophically, there's very little that we're going to do to address slide 12. Because what we prided ourselves on is how do we show growth of our English learners over time in gaining proficiency of the English language, then being successful on assessment? So this is just one where philosophically I just don't agree with the move from the VDOE at all. It just, it really just does not make sense. I don't know how we could turn to our educators and say, what are you going to do different to get our, our students that have been in the country, enrolled in our schools for 12 calendar months to pass an assessment where other kids get the benefit of preschool, kindergarten, go back to that Mount Daniel slide of, look at all the kids who went from high risk to low risk. These are students who don't have that same kind of time and attention. So I just wanted to just, I predict next year this time, we might be looking at similar numbers. And I'm not sure I would be able to speak to, you know, anything that I would have asked Oak Street to do kind of differently, but really focusing on that growth and mastering of the English language. And then Ms. Hennings talked about, I was principal of Graham Road, 70% of our kids were English language learners. We had to have tough conversations with parents, like we have to give your kid the SOL test, but we're not coaching them to go beyond a frustration level to complete something that we know that they just can't access. So I just felt it was important to kind of bring kind of that reality of this move by VDOE and into the room and then figure out just kind of where we stand on, you know, what is our focus area for else? Because I think Ms. Henderson asked a great question, like what would we expect to see different in our classrooms? And, you know, what is our focus really going to be as we kind of think year over year, like looking at this chart versus? The other thing that we prided ourselves is the longer we kept our students in our schools, we saw the benefit over, over time. Look at the, look at how they perform at Henderson. Then look at how they did on, to graduate from, from Meridian, so.
No, that's helpful. That's helpful context, helpful reminder, and especially, you know, philosophically how we want to approach this. I think also adding to this slide, besides this is, you're saying percent growth, this is also kind of like a cohort comparison over the years, right? So if we exit students, like basically, we're basically talking about the same, we could be talking about the same group of students every year that we're working with, not the same students, but this actually is kind of consistent. This should be expected, correct?
Yes. I mean, we certainly have students exiting the program every year and then we have new students coming in and their entry points into the ESOL program are different because when they come in, we give them the WEATA screener to assess their English language proficiency level. And that determines whether they are, you know, a one, a two, or three and the services that they get. So there is certainly variation over the year. It's not a, not a clean progression, but yes, looking at this, you know, we're relatively consistent in our, you know, our ESOL program is growing. Our numbers have increased slightly. We're up to about 9% English learners in the division now, up from like 7.9-ish two years ago. But yes, this is as reliable as it can be when you're talking about a changing student population.
And then adding Dr. Dade's points, I mean, now we're talking about students where we're looking at the comparison of the cohort. The cohort can change very drastically if they're only here for, or only being counted for three semesters. So this is, yeah, this is a very difficult slide to, to, to assess or, or, you know, pull anything from except where they are. So just, you know, more context. So Lori?
Thank you. Couple of questions. Well, before I go into questions, Dr. Dade, I'm like enthusiastically in agreement with you on your philosophy. So thank you for saying that. I, I do remember previous meetings discussing the growth versus pass rate. And you're, I mean, at, at least in my opinion, your, you know, your focus is spot on and exactly where it should be. So thank you for, for sharing that with us. Couple of questions. One on absenteeism, we see the Mount Daniel numbers. Do you have the numbers for the other schools?
I do not have them at the tip of my fingers right now.
I'm just curious if that could be shared at some point. Nothing urgent. And then finally going to slide 23. Is that, is that kind of the, these are the same students being tested, you know, so like kindergarten at 29 and then 13 for high risk, 34 and then 10 for moderate risk. Those are the same students because they're tested in the fall and in the spring, right?
Correct.
So is this kind of the same trend that we've seen, seen year after year? Because this is only now a snapshot of what we're seeing for one year.
It, yes. So it is, VOWS is reported a little differently than the PALs test was, which was the old one. The VOWS test gives a lot more specific detail about how we can identify students who may be at high risk or moderate risk or low risk for developing reading difficulties because of the code based subtests that are in there and the way the questions are structured to really help drill down to what skills students need when they're in kindergarten to build that foundation based on the science of reading. And then looking at grade one, you know, where should students be in that skill development in fall? And where does that put them on the, the scale of high risk, moderate, or low?
I'm, I'm just curious, like, there's no longitudinal data here.
Correct.
So is that because of the switch from PALs to VOWS?
Yes.
Okay. So next year, I'm sure we'll see longitudinal data.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks Lori. Oh, wow. Uh, let's just go down the line. Amy?
Thank you. Just following up on the VOWS results, I'm trying to sort of make sense of, I think of identifying kids who may have reading difficulties as a positive thing, right? And so I'm wondering why it's better that our numbers have shifted, have shifted as opposed to, because a lot of the, a lot of these kids may have difficulties that can't be explained by educational resources. They have difficulties that stem from dyslexia, from ADHD, and maybe they haven't been identified yet. So I'm just trying to make sense of how that information plays into interpreting this data. Does that make any sense?
Sure. Yeah. So when we look at this, it's important to keep in mind, like if we take kindergarten, for example, you know, 29% of the students were identified as having a high risk of developing reading difficulties when they took the VOWS assessment in the fall. And then in the spring, only 13% of the students were identified as being at high risk of developing a reading difficulty. So some of those original 29% are still in that 13% in the spring. So they were high risk in the fall. They're still high risk in the spring. Some of them may have moved into that moderate risk category based on, you know, instruction and skills that they've developed throughout the year. So like, we're not, this is not attempting to show which students moved from one category to another. Some of them did, some of them for a variety of reasons, may still be considered high risk at this point, even though, you know, they took VOWS last year in kindergarten and now they're in first grade for a variety of reasons. They still may be falling into that high risk category. The, you know, the goal is to give our students the skills that they need to eventually become successful readers. And so when we look at this just as a trend, the, the VOWS data is very, very detailed and teachers can look at, you know, student, student's ability to recognize letters because in kindergarten, that is a huge part of building the foundation to learn to read. So there are 52 questions about do, what is this letter? What is this letter? And so all of those individual question types are the things that teachers are looking at to guide their instruction, while this is just giving us a general overview of, you know, in the fall, 29% of our kindergartners fell into that high risk category. We're making good progress if, you know, in the spring, only 13% of our student body is still categorized as high risk.
Yeah. And I would just offer, especially at the kindergarten level, when I, whenever I look at that, you know, my, my initial thought is, okay, so we start with that, the, the fall test and we see that 29, that's before like explicit instruction, that's before intervention, that's before providing access to the curriculum. So now we've had almost an entire or a full year of that targeted instruction, whole group instruction, explicit instruction, intervention. And we have an opportunity to test them again. Where are we seeing that movement or that growth? And so that's where I kind of see the, the numbers line up.
Thank you for that. That, that makes sense.
Thanks, Amy. Anne?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate your comments, Dr. Dade, and, and also agree and underscore those about English learners. And as I'm reflecting on, on the conversation about the WEATA slide and what you said, I'm thinking back to the slide 12 about English learners and SOL pass rates. And just to clarify, the, once, once a student has exited the ESOL program, they're no longer identified as an ESOL student.
Correct.
So they are not really appearing in those SOL rates anymore, right?
You're absolutely correct. So as students, you know, move out of the ESOL program, they are no longer counting in the English learner reporting group. So that English learner reporting group is always our students who are somewhere, you know, on an EL level of one to four, still acquiring and developing their English language skills. So as, as soon as a student becomes proficient in English based on the WEATA test, then they are no longer reported in that group.
So it's hard to see in a way, all of the success that we've really had with those students.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate that. I think, one other question, just to follow up on what Ms. Silverman asked about chronic absenteeism. It seems like the, with Mount Daniel, that that kind of tracked where the, I think it was the 202223 school year, we saw higher chronic absenteeism across the district. Do we know, there seems like a slight increase this year over la, or 202425 over the prior year? Is there any source of that that we're aware of in particular or?
I can't speak to that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Bethany?
I want to go back to what you shared, Dr. Dade, and that context, which I really appreciate. And I also agree with you and I recall Dr. Noonan having a similar perspective. And so I appreciate that. I think that's really important. So my question is, what data are you looking at? What data should we be looking at for context of answering the question? Is our ESOL program working the way we want it to?
Yep. So there's a few data points and I'm speaking out of turn because I haven't kind of wrapped my head around, you know, data dialogues and things of that nature here. Just to kind of go back to my time as a principal, we really looked at how long we kept students, so looking at their growth over time and expecting their performance on state assessments to follow suit. So our huge success stories were if we got them at Graham Road in kindergarten, we could predict with great certainty that they were going to pass the SOLs in third through sixth grade. If they came, got to us in second grade, we could say with pretty great certainty that fifth and sixth grade was going to be a successful time for them. So one, looking at the, their advancement through WEATA growth over time, that's a state by state, looking at those measures over time. So that would be an important data point for us to look at as a, as a district. And then it's, it's very difficult to track, to measure what's a point because the goal post starts to move for us because our success is our greatest enemy. Because we exit kids out, then they fall into a different category. So I'd rather track kids by their individual growth over time and look at their story versus trying to make sense of what is our fifth grade rate? Because you have to account for 23% exiting the program compared to the fourth grade year and then that factors into our overall performance. But I think the greatest indicator is that slide that shows how many we exit, what percentage we exit each year and then that growth over, over time. I've also looked at, uh, uh, reading levels. So again, with great certainty, if my fifth graders were reading at a DRA level or an F and P level X, what does that equate to in their ability to be proficient in all of the standards that we're looking at?
Thank you. That's helpful. I would welcome that context in future iterations of this.
Okay.
I think that would be great so that we're focusing on the right data as opposed to the data that shows, just that shows up in the reporting.
Sure. And, and I would just add to everything that Dr. Dade said, those WEATA access scores, where we're just looking here at the overall results. So that WEATA test is administered as a reading, writing, speaking, and listening component. So when those scores come back, the student's overall composite score is what's used to determine growth and if they exit the program. Those individual test scores in each of those four domains are what our teams are digging into. And like, for example, right now, teams are building student reading plans for students who have taken the VOWS test and, you know, all of our students took that. But then for our English learners, they've taken the VOWS test. We have WEATA access results from last year. We have STAR assessment results. We have SOL results. So the team is looking at all of that information together. For SOLs, they also have access to, it's called a student data by question report where it breaks down SOL performance by particular skills. So they're looking at all of that data together and coming up with plans for individual students because they all have different needs, at different areas where they're growing at different rates.
So that's, that by name and by need, I think is what Dr. Noonan used to say, like that, we do that in this district is so cool. And why I would welcome that data is that helps us, would help me as a board member, I think helped the community understand what the data is that, that you as a team are focusing on, that we as a, a school board should be focusing on, to know, hey, this is working and this is how this is playing out. Because when I look at this, I don't know if 16% is good, bad, or terrible, right? And so I also welcome more context in that to help us go like, okay, so that is, that 16% is what we've been doing for years. It is the right number or we really want to be at 22, whatever, then I'm making, right? That would be super helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. And if, if I may add, I think Dr. Santiago would be upset with me if I didn't share this because she's been texting me. I'm trying not to pay attention to the phone. But, and we didn't draw any analysis or comparative analysis, you know, I'm benchmarking us against the state. But as she is texting me, our exit and our growth data are some of the highest in the state across the board in both categories. And so again, kind of take that for what it's worth, but it is another data point that we would want to look at or, or consider.
Makes sense. Thank you. Jared, did you have a question?
Yeah. So it's in the similar, though more targeted vein than Ms. Henderson's. But regarding the WEATA results, it's great to see kind of growth. But I am curious as to whether, it would, it would be interesting to see kind of what kind of growth the students are going through. Because, you know, I understand, you know, so some kids will score at a one, some will be two, and then they'll exit at 4.4. And so just kind of understanding what, say, the average trajectory for a student in, in the ESOL program is. And so, you know, if a student starts at a one, how long does it take them to exit? Kind of thing. That would be kind of helpful for us to see, okay, well, are we speeding up growth? Are we, is it, is it maintaining? Things of that nature. That would be great.
We can certainly discuss that with Dr. Santiago. I think that's really difficult to quantify because we're taking into account all those external factors that influence a student before they come to us and what their entry point is when they get here. But we can certainly discuss that with her.
Any other questions? Aiden? Good? Okay. All right. We'll keep going. Ms. Hennings, thank you.
All right. Moving into our last data component of the presentation, just a quick look at international baccalaureate program highlights and some college readiness data. So this is a summary of our IB program. So, this is a summary of our IB program from 2425. We had 265 students taking one or more exams, almost 1,000 exams given over at Meridian, and an amazing English pass rate of 97% in SL and HL English for those students, 64 diplomas earned, and 17 of the career-related program certificates earned by our graduating class over at Meridian. 2025 marked a record high in our number of IB diplomas earned at 64, as well as an increase in the average exam score by our diploma program recipients. So, yet another example of increasing access for students while also increasing rigor and ensuring that that increased access is also being supported so that all of our students can be successful in our IB programs. This slide gives us a closer look at our participation and performance specifically in IB English because we know that we are an IB English for All division. So, our average exam scores for students taking both standard and higher-level English has steadily increased over the last three years. You can see SL and then HL on the far right. So, our average exam scores have continued to increase. And that HL average exam score is especially impressive as we consider the increased enrollment in that higher-level English class. So, again, another way that we are continuing to increase access for students while also raising the bar. Looking ahead to spring 2026, our IB program completers, we currently have 69 anticipated diploma program candidates, and that represents 27% of the senior class as of enrollment from September 23rd. So, that's our unofficial enrollment. It is September 30th, but I'm not ready to be quoted on numbers just yet. So, that was September 23rd. And for the class of 2027, look at that number of anticipated diploma program candidates, up to 84. So, that would put us at almost 40% of the class of 2027. They are currently anticipated diploma program candidates. And on the right side of the screen, you can see our career-related program certificate candidates. Looking at the class of 2026, we have 24. So, that gives us 9% of the senior class. And then, the following year, for the class of 2027, we currently have six anticipated career-related program certificate candidates. That is a mouthful. Shifting gears to SAT participation and performance, following a national trend since COVID, participation in the SAT does seem to be rebounding. And we see that at Meridian, up to 72% of our senior class took the SAT. But again, continuing to increase our performance as well, those improved student outcomes. You can see our overall mean score last year was a 1266, up almost 20 points from the year before and 40 points from 2023. So, impressive growth shown by our students in their SAT results. And then, when we look at our 10th and 11th grade, that data is combined here. So, last year, we had 407 students participate in the PSAT over grades 10 and 11. And you'll notice that the participation for the PSAT is higher than the SAT. The PSAT is given on a school day, so students are coming to us. We have a captive audience. We are handing it to them. So, it makes it a little easier for students to access. And our overall mean score has continued to increase on the PSAT as well. Dr. Bates, if you want to bring it home?
Yeah, so as we move closer to the close, we couldn't, couldn't finish without at least one qualitative slide. And so, we are happy to share the, based upon our 2425 data and participation in niche, the school rankings. We are ranked number one in the Commonwealth of Virginia, number one in the DMV or the DC area, and also, we have the number one public middle school in Virginia with our proud Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, so.
All right. Well, thank you for that, and I think that's a, a fitting middle school slide for Mr. Pickering's birthday today. So, yes, so that's, that's great. So, Ms. Henderson, just a couple overall comments. Obviously, the amount of work for, longitudinal but really cohort-based, since it's not longitudinal, but cohort-based over the years is, is great. I mean, this has been pushed by Dr. Sue Dimick for years when she was on the school board. So, we are texting her to let her know she needs to tune in because of, and I know she is, she's going to be excited to, to see. And also, the community, because I think it's really important. I think we've always wrestled with, who do we compare ourselves to? Sometimes we balance between the state, then we try to do a region. Do we pick a high school? And I think what you've done is great. You're comparing ourselves to how we're supposed to be doing. I think that's what our teachers and our leaders want to do, is how do we continuously improve? That's the IB trait. So, you've done a great job of presenting this. And I think also balancing where we're doing well, which we always have to feel good about ourselves, but also where we can improve without the, the need of putting a spotlight and then what do we do with that? It's really putting a spotlight, how do we improve versus anything else? So, really appreciate all the great work on this.
Thank you.
And the, and the data visualization is just outstanding, by the way. I know you know that, but that's just great. So, yes.
It's fun for me.
Yeah, it's very, and that's very talented, because I think what Dr. Bates said earlier, you know, you have to have, you know, good data in to get good data out, but people forget the fact that the data out is actually one of the most important pieces. How do you communicate that? How do you get people to understand the story and have, and be able to figure out their own analysis? And you did a great job with that.
Thank you.
So, the IB diploma, I do have a question. I don't know, I, I'll start with you, Ms. Henderson, on this. The IB diploma slide, I always feel like we balance between, we want more to take it because we highlight the participation percent. But then, we also talk about the rigor, and it's not for everyone. The diploma, not IB, but the diploma for the community. What is our, what are we expecting here? Like, I mean, would, do we want everyone to take the IB diploma? Is that what we want? Or do we really want, you know, 40%? Is that what's good? Like, what are we aiming for, for our, our students?
I'm going to let Dr. Bates take that one. He looks like he's ready to jump in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to, ready to jump in there. You know, I, I always go back to what's the best, what's the best fit and match for, for the student, based upon their interests, based upon time constraints, participation, motivation. And it really should be that student taking an opportunity to sit down and have intimate conversations with their school counselor, conversations with their parents, and making that decision, which is also a heavy commitment, to move into that IB DP diploma candidacy, if that's what you're speaking to specifically. Because all of the students are IB students and access the, you know, an IB curriculum. But when it's time to make that choice, whether or not to move forward into the DP program and take those various sets of, of courses, yet we want students to make, you know, make that informed decision without, with, without feeling a sense of pressure or demand that they need to, you know, they need to do something that they might not be 100% committed to. Because in the past, we've received data and feedback from students directly from their voices who've shared that they have made decisions based upon friends, based upon a sense of belonging, or based upon other factors, then, yeah.
Yeah, I'll push you a little bit on that answer. Because it was, I, I appreciate that, and, and you're right. I think our program is, is, is quite rigorous. I mean, there are other IB high schools in the area where they have a significantly higher IB diploma participation, for whatever reason, whether it's, but, you know, and I think it's hard for us to not look at that and say, okay, this is, should we be at that percent or not? So, I fully understand that each student, by name and by need. But, Dr. Bates, is there, like, what, what would you, like, if, if our participation was 10% or if our participation was 80%? I feel like because we're putting that up there, we're using that as kind of a metric of some kind of success. So, give me a little more. Dr. Bates. Alpha male.
And I just want to add another wrinkle because my family's living it. So, in a county right next door, you're, you have options. So, you can go to an AP or an IB school, and ours are kind of forced, not in a very good way. This is a fantastic opportunity for them, but I worry about that lack of choice if, if IB is not just, you know, IB diploma is not working out for a kid. I, I wrestled with the kind of like IB for all, and what does that mean? Same thing when we were going through like honors for all, and I've always kind of landed on the access too, that we would promote, support any kiddo who wanted to, who said, yes, this is good for me. I would expect every educator wraparound to support that kiddo to get there. But I worry about, to Dr. Bates' point, if a kiddo just says, nope, it is, is not for me, what do we do with that, that information? I, I do not have a good answer for, like, what would I, is this a growth over time metric? Because I can't help but kind of hop over to, I think, a really critical metric that no district I've been a part of has done well is, so what? So, what does a DP mean if they go on to college and university? And like, what, what is their kind of next step? So, what, what's, what, what is this equipping them for? And if we track the other 60%, are they getting the same outcome for me as a parent? Then, job well done, FCCPS, no matter which route they took. So, I, I'm struggling with, like, what I would even answer you to saying, yeah, I would expect a 10% increase. Like, I'm, I would struggle with a smarter goal on this over time without kind of a larger discussion of, like, are we truly saying that IB for all is IB for all? That we would say in five years' time, we would expect this to be 90%?
Yeah, and I think I've struggled with that too, because I think when this is presented, not just in the data presentation, but at graduation or a different, you know, senior events and things like that, it is always, it is always presented in a way of, like, if you're not part of the, well, 42%, you know, the 39 plus 3, you feel like, where am I fitting in this space? And I know at times, we try to highlight the IB, then the CP, and then we highlight everybody because everybody has to be highlighted here. I'm just curious, how do we maybe create that picture that, of where does everybody fit? And, and, and I think it's just an open-ended question of how do we present that? Because I think you're absolutely right. If a student is not one of these two diploma tracks, where do they fit? And how are they being compared, thought of, supported in this district and versus a, I didn't choose one of these, but I'm actually choosing this? And it's just an open-ended question that this district will always wrestle with. So, I appreciate that. Good answers.
I think it's a great question.
Yeah.
Okay, Kathleen?
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with, with, with all of these comments. And specifically, when we're thinking about the DP, the number that I always think is really important is the percent earning the diploma. To your point, Dr. Bates, like, to me, in terms of making sure that these students are choosing this path that is appropriate for them from, from a genuine choice, a place of genuine choice, to me, that percent earning diploma is important because those, that shows, the more who actually earn it, that is an indicator that it was the right choice for them and it was a good fit. I don't think we need to expect 100%. There's always going to be exceptions to that. But to me, I think that's, that's an important number. And then, I think what's really interesting is as we look, I think, once we opened up the, the career-related program option, I was always really curious to see if it changed the percentage of our students who are pursuing one of the two options, or if it would just, the percentage would stay the same and it would be fewer DP because some of those DP, typical DP students might choose CP. But what we're seeing is that the percentage of students who are choosing one of the IB paths is, is increasing, which I think is exciting. Again, I don't think we need to be aiming for 80, 90% of our students doing one of these paths, but the fact that the percentage of students is increasing is encouraging to me because it's showing that we're capturing more kids and what, what fits them. So, I, I like to see, as much as it's a bit of a bummer to see that only six students are, are pursuing the CP in the junior class, you know, that, that could just be a one-off, who knows? I mean, that's something I, I know we'll look at over time, which it's a surprising number, but again, like, time will tell on that. But I, I really like seeing the percentage of kids growing and, and the, I know we'll always be constrained, we are so small, but have such a diverse menu of options for our students, which I think is really important to Chair Gould's point of looking at, what, what are those other 60% of the students doing? And what are we offering them? And continuing to, to both celebrate and focus on the IB, but also looking at that 60% and all the other options there. It's a lot to balance, and I think it is an open-ended question. There's not just one, one answer. But those are some of the things that I, I think are important to keep in mind.
Thank you, Kathleen. Going down the line. Okay. And, oh, nope, I was just scratching the head. Sorry, no, no. I was ready. I was ready. All right. Well, I think with that, Ms. Henderson, Dr. Bates, Dr. Dade, yeah, I really appreciate all the time on this. Thank you very much, as always, so, yeah.
You're very welcome. And I did just want to give you a heads up, the School Performance and Support Framework, that new accountability system, be on the lookout for that information. VDOE is going to be, they say they're going to be releasing it in the near future, and I just wanted to put out there as a reminder that those calculations are done slightly differently from the annual pass rate calculation. So, keep that in mind when that data becomes available. It should not match what we saw here tonight because, again, there are different business rules for it, so.
Okay. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Henderson. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Enjoyed it, as always. All right, we'll go ahead and wrap up our student performance data presentation. Now, we will go ahead and move on to section three, 3.01, upcoming items. So, we have upcoming items.
Do you want me to share next, uh?
Yes, yeah, just, yeah, just some, yeah, that'd be great. That's, that's true.
Yeah, so, we meet in short order, next Tuesday, different location. So, we will be providing further information with regards to enrollment, answering a few of the board questions, the few board questions that came up during our just heads-up information on enrollment before. And our year-end financials are in, so we'll be providing the board with, with details on that.
That's great. Thank you. Looking forward to it, as always. All right, we'll start, we'll meet in City Hall next week. So, all right, with that, we're going to, that'll be, that'll be the conclusion of our public meeting. We're going to move to closed, and we come back at a close. There's no other kind of business. So, for members of the public, we appreciate you tuning in. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to closed. Ms. Silverman, closed meeting, please.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, legal matters under section 2.2-3711A7, in particular consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Thank you very much, Ms. Silverman. I have a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.